The meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, business meeting, Monday, January 27th, 2020, 7:00 PM, in the Pennsylvania County General District Courtroom. Edwin R. Shields Courthouse Edition, 11 Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Davis.
Where is it?
Mr. Dudley.
Here.
Mr. Farmer.
Here.
Mr. Ingram.
Here.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Scares.
Here.
Mr. Warren.
Here. I would ask that you would observe a moment of silence with us, please. Thank you. I would ask that you would stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're down to, our county attorney has asked to address us before the agenda items.
County staff has researched and I talked to the chairman, we humbly expect seven of these to be removed from consent agenda, but that's not necessary to be on there tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Are there items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to add the following item to tonight's agenda under matters from the work session. Number one, CPMT attendance report acceptance. Number two, public hearing authorization for annual tax code change. Number three, county community cap program policy. Number four, resolution number 2020-01-04 relating to support of HB 480. Number five, public hearing authorization solid waste fine escalation system. Number six, budget calendar. Number seven, rescue squad grant. Number eight, sheriff's letter transmittal regarding Medicaid process for county inmates. And finally, number nine, fire and rescue commission stipend.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion bade by Mr. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Dudley. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes.
I don't have anything. Where am I at?
Okay.
Are you not on?
Not up yet.
Close it, have it back up.
Okay.
He's down.
It's down.
We're having a computer glitch, folks. Bear with us just a second. Technology's a wonderful thing until it don't work.
But it's okay.
My first meeting as chairman this year, so I didn't know I was gonna have to do stand-up, but I can if I'm called on.
Mr. Chairman, it's giving me an option to set the mover in secondary. You want me to try that?
Yes.
All right, and we're gonna do roll call for the rest of it. That's okay.
That's great.
Yes.
Dr. Miller.
Good. Yes.
All right, Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yeah.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Mr. Farmer.
Yes.
And Mr. Dudley.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Okay. Let me see if that works.
You can record it. They've all been cast now, so you could record it.
All right, that worked.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thanks to everyone.
Thank you.
Can I get an approval of the agenda with the additional items and the removal of an item?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion bade by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Scares. Is there any discussion on the motion?
And I'm gonna do that one the same way. Because I still don't have that connection.
Okay. We got it now.
All right. And Mr. Dudley, I'm gonna ask for yours verbally.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, motion carries.
It kicked me out.
Unanimously, I think. Or do you want to do a roll call? It carried unanimously.
Yep.
Mr. Dudley said yes.
Yeah.
All right, we're moving right along. Consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion bade by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Ingram. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Dudley.
Yes.
Mr. Farmer.
Yes.
And Mr. Dudley.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Okay. Let me see if that works.
You can record it. They've all been cast now, so you could record it.
All right, that worked.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thanks to everyone.
Thank you.
Can I get an approval of the agenda with the additional items and the removal of an item?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion bade by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Scares. Is there any discussion on the motion? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Scares.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Dudley.
Yes.
Mr. Farmer.
Yes.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
Dr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
We're down to presentations. The first one we have tonight, I'll ask the other supervisors to come down with you. Tonight, we're going to present a flag to our chairman, outgoing chairman from last year, Mr. Davis. It's a real privilege for me to get to do this tonight for Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis did an outstanding job as our chairman through his leadership skills, you know, last year, and I'm sure all of you saw in the paper the number of economic development projects we had. Several of those actually were announced and are in his districts. It might have been a little slant today, favoritism toward his district, I don't know, but he did an outstanding job. Being chairman can. I've done it before, so I know that it can be very tiresome and very taxing, but we have great staff to work with and they do a lot of it, so, but we do appreciate his service very much and we want to tell him from the board, thank you very much for your leadership last year.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis. We sit.
I would like to say, most times you're supposed to say something real quick. I only did it right one time last year, and that was when the whole system went down. We had to do it all manually. If it wasn't for the county attorney helping me along, that you guys didn't know about, I still would be absent today, so.
Okay, the next presentation is from Walkway of Honor Donation Request Presentation. Joyce French. I think this is, this is your guest, isn't it, Ben?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Ms. French is here to present and, like I said, the Walkway of Honor. Thank you for coming, Ms. French.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, and I'm very happy to have this opportunity. And I know some of you may have at least heard my name because I'm a grant administrator working on the Berry Hill Waterline Extension, working on contract with the city of Eden, and I am proud to say that line is ahead of schedule and rolling. I was there today. But my greatest claim to fame in Pennsylvania County is I am, or I was, the co-grandmother with Lori Moran for our beautiful grandchildren. So she was Grammy and I was Oma, and we were quite a team, and I miss her terribly not having her here with me tonight. But I have with me Diane McMahon, and she has just a little bit of information to pass out while I'm, I'm gonna give you some background on why we're doing this. My brother is a retired lieutenant general, and he was appointed to the Virginia War Memorial Foundation a couple of years ago. And he's sitting at the board meeting table and he hears people talking, and they kept using the term Southside. But what they were saying just did not seem to match Southside. So finally, being a newbie, and he is kind of quiet for a general, I must say, he spoke up and he said, "What are you all calling Southside?" And so if they were from the Norfolk area, they said, "Oh, Portsmouth and Chesapeake." And if they were from the Richmond, it's just as bad. And if you're from the Richmond area, they were talking about Chester and Colonial Heights. Well, he, having grown up in Mecklenburg on the south end of the mule, knew full well that that was not Southside. So he called me, since I've worked the Southside area for 40 years now, and he asked what I could do to help bring awareness of the Virginia War Memorial out into the Southside region, but more importantly, what could I do to make the Virginia War Memorial and the people in the Richmond area aware fully of where Southside, Virginia is, who we are, and what we are about? And I said, "Well, let me see what I can do." And I contacted my friend Ted Daniel, and he's the Blue Motel manager of South Boston and was there for 15 years, and he's a retired Air Force Colonel. And he's settled up in Northern Virginia, and I said, "Ted, come back down here where you belong. I need help." And he did. And we talked about, well, how can we get Southside so that, from nail and toe in perpetuity, when they're sitting there talking about what's Southside, that right there in Richmond, we've made our mark? And Ted and I went, and they had a number of sponsorships or naming items. Well, they were all very expensive, but we saw the Walkway of Honor, and the sponsorship for that was $100,000. And Ted and I were talking and we're going, "That's, that's a lot of money." And finally Ted, who's soft-spoken, he said, "You know, that's 100 people to give $1,000. It's 200 people to give $500. It's 400 people to give $250. And if we can't get that out of Mecklenburg, Halifax, and Pennsylvania, we should be ashamed." And I said, "Well, now that you put it like that, that seems a lot better than just saying $100,000." So we chose the Walkway of Honor as to what we were gonna pursue the sponsorship for. And so we tell, there are some very elderly people, and no offense to anybody, but I mean, when I say that, I'm meaning own up in their 80s, but said, "The Southside really think they can raise that kind of money?" Well, if you know me, you know that was just like sticking a coal fire on my butt, to be quite honest. I mean, that just, and I'm like, "What do you think we are?" So Ted and I said, "Yes, we can raise that, that kind of money." And we started in June. And the first event was for Mecklenburg and Chase City, and it was held in Chase City on June 4th. And then the second event was in Halifax and for the Halifax-South Boston area, and that was June 6th. And you know, June 6th this year was the 75th anniversary of D-Day. And so those two events focused solely on World War II veterans. Then on November the 15th, we waited for the Veterans Day week to have the event in Danville in Pennsylvania, and we hosted it at the Danville Golf Club. And our intent there was to honor representatives of veterans for all the wars. We were gonna focus on World War II, any veterans we could find from World War II, but we wanted to have a representative there to represent each of the wars that night. And a couple, I did send several invitations to representatives of the board of supervisors, but unfortunately, you all had conflicts, as a lot of people did that night. A Friday night is not a good night to have an event. But it was well-attended, and we had 50 people there, and we were just pleased with the way it went. We had our, our guests come in through where we lined up and formed a Walkway of Honor. And that night, we had as young as Gregory Bach, who's a young man in his, excuse me, late 20s, he represented the war on terror. We had Edward Nelson Reynolds, he's from Gretna, I believe, he represented the Vietnam War. Garrett Easley, who's from Sutherland, represented the Korean conflict, and he also served in Vietnam, so he was double. Kermit White was the Korean conflict, he was there. And then we were truly blessed because we had Louis Gravely, World War II, Andrew Farley, World War II, and John Ward, who had just turned 101, World War II.
How about that?
John Ward came in in his scooter with his little thing, and he went up to his table, and everybody's just clapping, and he, and he backs up and he turns around until he maneuvered that thing right where he would be seated. These men, the smiles and the looks on their face was, was worth everything, and I do want you to know that Ted Daniel and I have paid for all of these events. We are not looking for anybody to pay for any of these events. We have, we have putted that bill. So the question is, what do we want to achieve in addition to getting the sponsorship? Well, basically, we, we'd like most certainly for the Commonwealth of Virginia to know where Southside, Virginia is. And even more importantly, we want them to know that we will never forget our military heroes and their sacrifices. No matter what, no matter who, no matter where, we are gonna honor our heroes, and we are especially honored to be able to remember the World War II. At this point, we are $15,750 short of our goal. And I'm gonna tell ya, I pulled people's hair, pulled their teeth, drug them along, and begged, pleaded, and whatever else it took. So we are so close, but we've got to get the Pennsylvania Danville community to come in for that amount. What is intended is that this will be dedicated on February 29th, that is a Saturday, and it will open the new wing for the War on Terror at the Virginia War Memorial, and dedicate this huge big rock that I might say is a Southside, Virginia rock, picked up right from Mecklenburg County with a bronze plaque on it. And I think you have, with what Diane gave you, you see the little bronze plaque roughly what it will say in it. It says, "Proudly sponsored by the citizens and businesses of Southside, Virginia, in honor of those who serve its counties, cities, and towns, the military forces of the United States in war and peace, and in loving memory of those who gave their lives in that service." And then it will list the local governments that are a part of this initiative. Now, yes, truly, there is more to Southside, but to me and my upbringing and where I've been and my work, Halifax, Mecklenburg, and Pennsylvania, Danville, South Boston, that's, that's the core, that's the heart of Southside, Virginia. And we want them to know that's where the heart is, and we want them to give us our just rewards. And you'll see on the back of the card, I've mailed this card out to residents here, the ones that were invited that night, and you'll see on the back of that, you'll see a little bit about what we'll get. In addition to the rock with the plaque, we're gonna get the first three sections in the Walkway where people can purchase bricks for their loved ones. So when you step out of the, the pavilion area and start, you know, the Walkway of Honor, the first thing you're gonna see are our people, not Northern Virginia, Tidewater in Richmond, but Southside people. And I just would appreciate so much if you all could help us, but I did want to show you, and bear in mind, this was taken that night, I think Diane gave you a copy of this too. Did you give them this one? This is Louis Gravely, and that's when he saluted my brother as he came in to be received in the Walkway of Honor. This gentleman is what it's about. This is awesome. And I thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer questions that you may have. I'll take you to Richmond.
Thank you, Ms. French. Do I have any questions from the board? Yeah, Mr. Davis.
I do appreciate your stand. I'm a former veteran as well, and I do appreciate you taking the stance of notifying and showing them about Southside. In fact, we got running water in a mall here in Southside.
You don't know how many times, but my life has been grants, as some of you may know, grants, grant writing, and getting money for localities. And I had some people that were funding agencies once, and I had students at my high school, and they asked about bathroom, and I looked right down, and I said, "I'm sorry, what do we have indoor plumbing here? I have to go behind a tree." And they looked at me for a minute like they believed me. So yes, we, we've got to get the word out that, that we're here and we care. It's just, it's just so much, and I encourage all of you to go, and I promise you, if you would get together and go as a group, my brother would come up and be happy to host you and give you a private tour of the museum and tell you all about it, and I'll tag along, but it is awesome. When you see memory, which was on the, those, I think the chairman and the vice chairman got this, the invitation, but this statue of memory, it's a large, it's, I don't know how many feet, a marble statue, and it says "Memory" around the bottom, down at the bottom, and she guards the glass wall, and on that glass wall, by counting, is etched the names of each person. So Pennsylvania County, it would list the names of your people lost in World War II. And so each county is listed, and then those names engraved, and you sit there with her flame burning, and it's just breathtaking.
Mr. Farmer, then the stream.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. French, thank you for coming again, and thank you for your tireless efforts on the fundraising that you've done thus far. We can't take action tonight because it's not on the agenda, but I will make certain that we have it on February's agenda to see how it turns out, but I will say thank you for getting it to this point.
And I appreciate that, and, and I know you're probably Baptist and I'm Methodist. Is it okay if I pass the plate?
I ain't gonna make that motion. That's the first thing.
We, we'll be discussing it, but we won't be able to, like, Mr. English.
As a son of a World War II veteran, my daddy was in nine major battles. He went in in '41, one of the first to volunteer from the Danville Schofield Recruiting Station, and came out in 1945. And we got his medals a few years later. He got two Bronze Stars and a Silver Star. But he was so happy when he came home, he didn't stick around and get no medals. He was happy to meet my mom and had seven children. And then his cousin was killed, he was a paratrooper. So I just wanted to tell you how much I appreciate you and Diane working on this. The memorial at the, next to the Braves Park, Davis Newman, a friend of my family, was the, I guess, the originator of that project, so.
I just, that made me think of something. One of the other things, because we're not through when we get a rock and a plaque. I've got the idea of us getting a Southside link on their website, so when people go on and look at the Virginia War Memorial, they can see Southside memorials because the Danville Memorial is just gorgeous. Halifax has a very pretty one in Clarksville, though. And then we're also thinking about a driving tour where people could leave the Tidewater area and come up, stop in Clarksville, go on to Halifax, come over here, spend the night, see your memorial, then maybe cut by Red Hill on the way and go back home. And, and we, we're looking to do that. We're gonna, we're gonna soak it for all it's worth when we, when we get our foot in the door.
Good.
But I think a website would really tie us in and get, because we need tourism to our local.
And when you pass your plate, even though I'm not Baptist nor Methodist, you can count me in.
Anybody else?
I'm good. Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. French, you can count me in, too. My father was a veteran, so I definitely will be contributing. But Mr. Smithelman.
Sir.
And Mr. Hunt, would it be appropriate and available for us to put this out on our Facebook page and website, a link to, that this is available for anyone in the county?
Sure. We can advertise that the board heard the presentation this evening and publish the materials.
And you may can just use that card and the information on the back.
Okay. Is that all right? And I wanna, I wanna say this, after listening to your presentation tonight and knowing, Ms. Moran so well, and loving her so much, that I bet y'all's family get-togethers was very interesting, because I just can't imagine the two of you all not totally controlling the room, because she, she had that dynamic personality also.
She's the director of Southside Planting District and was there for 36 years, and of course, you know her story here, and I'm sure you all know Frank Ruff.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Well, Frank saw Lori before our children were married, and Frank said to Lori, "Oh, God, I can't imagine that wedding." And Lori said, "I'm told Melissa's brooms were beige and keep their mouths shut." I love her and I miss her dearly.
We did, too, and we do miss her dearly. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're down to hearing of the citizens. Each person, person addressing the board on the hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county, or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that signs up to speak during said section, who does not get the opportunity to do so because of an aforementioned time limit, shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The first citizen we have signed up to speak is Joshua Jennings.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gentlemen of the board, my name is Joshua Jennings. I live in the Blairs District and operate guns, gear, and ammo in the Tunstall District. I'm here to represent myself, my family, as well as the many customers who live in this great county. I have three items I wish to discuss. All three are relevant to the constitutional rights and in particular, the Second Amendment. First, I'm formally asking this board to investigate the cost of concealed carry permits. It is my understanding that Pennsylvania County is charging the legal maximum. While I do not expect the clerk's office to work for free, if there are any charges above this cost, it would be a great gesture to the public to adjust this cost downward. Note, I recently renewed my permit in July, so this is for the people that are either getting new permits or renewing themselves. Two, given the governor's and Richmond's recent wholesale disregard for constitutional rights and their proposed legislation and pending laws, I would suggest the county oversee a committee or have one formed to raise private funds for funding the sheriff's department. We should not have a constitutional officer beholding to Richmond when his oath is contrary to the tyranny which Richmond is demanding. If Richmond intends to weaponize the budgetary obligations of Pennsylvania County or any other county, this is a clear violation of our rights as citizens, as well as the obligation of the duties of said officials and elected body. And, three, there are militias already forming within this and many Virginia counties. It would be in the best interest for all to provide county oversight and leadership to these patriots. Militias are a defensive tool. Providing county-level leadership will organize, prepare, and protect against loose cannons and lone wolves. Providing this framework for the unpaid volunteers will not only make these militias safer, but could... but could prove an asset to our county. We hope that the Pennsylvania County Board can assist in this endeavor without abrogating rights or asking for serial numbers. Northam and the General Assembly have made it quite evident that the constitutions of this land mean nothing to them. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thanks, sir. Now, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk.
The next citizen we have signed up to speak is Frank Chambers.
Name is Frank Chambers from Blairs. Thank you for having me. Reason I came to speak before you is to back up what he just mentioned and reinforce by saying several of us in his room went to Richmond this past Friday to speak to our lawmakers. We spoke before the House Delegate Safety Committee that was pushing some of these unconstitutional, unconstitutional laws through. And my takeaway from the whole thing was, any laws that were proposed that went after criminals, maximum sentencing, anything that went after a criminal was quickly dismissed. Everything that went after law-abiding citizens was not. It was passed along party lines. My takeaway is that regardless of where we stand and what we say, they're gonna cram this down our throats. So to back up what he was saying, every time that Richmond strengthens their resolve to cram this crap down our throats, we need to strengthen our message and say no. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers. Madam Clerk.
We don't have anyone else sign up to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, everyone that spoke during hearing of the citizens. It's important for us to hear from our citizens, so we do appreciate you coming out and taking the time to voice your opinions and your concerns. Public hearings, other public hearings, each person addressing the board under a public hearing shall step up, give his or her name and district and his or her place of residency for non-county residents, uh, citizens, in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time unless the consent of the board is affirmatively given to extend the speakers allotted time. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. I'll open the first public hearing at seven thirty-three.
Mr. Chairman, you had no one sign up.
Okay, so we're closed public hearing at seven thirty-four. Mr. McLaughlin, make your presentation.
Why don't you briefly explain to the citizens what the proposed changes do.
So, in regards to the Chapter Two changes, Chapter Two, as you know, are, are local ordinances related to animals. Specifically, we were looking at anything regarding laws for, for cats and dogs, which more specifically is what the Pet Center deals with. While reviewing those, I noticed some discrepancies based on when they were passed with what the current Virginia Code states, particularly requirements for holding an animal for five or ten days, depending on signs of ownership. That was the most common thing that I found that was a discrepancy in the chapter code, Chapter Two ordinances that we had. So we've updated those to match Virginia Code, make sure that we're in line with the state guidelines. The only other real change that was in there, we added a fee schedule that was specific and fully disclosing to citizens in the event that their animal comes into the shelter was to need emergency veterinary care, or we just end up, the animal seized for some reason due to a court case or brought in as a stray, that the, any costs incurred by the county for caring for the animal, the owner would be asked to reimburse us for, and it's just spelled out there specifically in these ordinances. Think it's very reasonable, and for the most part, majority of these updates were just to make sure that we're in compliance with current Virginia Code.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Any questions for Mr. McLaughlin from the board? Okay, thank you. Thank us be on the agenda for vote next month?
Can we vote tonight? We lawfully advertised it, and there's a recommended motion in the act.
Okay, board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Pennsylvania County Code, Chapter Two revisions as presented.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Davis. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, cast your votes. I mean, all, cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Madam Clerk, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to mid-year budget adjustments approval, Ms. Vanderhyde.
Yes, this item pertains to mid-year adjustments that need to be made to the budget. Instead of bringing those items to you on a monthly basis and in small amounts, I try to save the smaller ones and put them on one mid-year. You'll have your second one in June, or there shortly after, to get things straightened out for the year end. So tonight, I hope you all have had a chance to review that list, and it tells you specifically where the monies are coming from and what line items they need to be appropriated to. The total amount that needs to be appropriated is seventy-five thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-two cents, and that's outlined in the memo that was included in your board packet. And these funds do not require additional local funds, but are funds that were received as either donations or as grants, or they may be refunds that were received in some kind of way. So I would ask for you all to consider approval of those appropriations tonight to the FY-20 budget.
Any questions from the board? Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion approving the amendments per Ms. Vanderhyde's presentation.
Motion made by Mr. Farmer.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Dudley. He beat you to it, Mr. Davis. Okay, we have a mo, a mo, motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Workforce Investment Board Grant Appropriation, Ms. Vanderhyde.
Yes, also included in your packet is an award notification letter from the Harvest Foundation. The Workforce Investment Board recently received that award and notification, and they are receiving a grant in the total amount of one million, seventy-nine thousand, seven twenty-seven seventy-five. It is a three-year grant, and it's to be used for a program entitled Guided Career Exploration, which is a program dedicated to impacting the lives of young adults in such a way that they reengage with positive life outcomes and steady work while simultaneously inspiring our local business community to see the immense potential in area young people and make strides to tap into that segment of our workforce. And as fiscal agents of the Workforce Investment Board, we are obligated to appropriate these funds to our budget, and there are no local matches required for this money. So we are seeking that you all approve this appropriation tonight.
Okay, it's board's pleasure.
Chairman, I make a recommendation that we approve this grant. I'm trying to find the exact numbers, but I can't.
It's not in there, I just looked.
One million, seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven and seventy-five cents.
Second.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Ms. Scares, seconded by Mr. Davis. He beat you this time, Mr. Dudley.
I didn't get it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please tally the vote. Madam Clerk. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Vanderhyde. We're down to appointments, Planning Commission appointment, Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to appoint, I'm making an appointment to the Planning Commission, and the reason, I'll tell you all the reason also of this appointment. I served on it for two and a half years, and I won Board Supervisors, so I have to get off of it, so therefore I have to appoint somebody. So I'm telling you all what I'm doing. These guys know what I'm doing, so. But at this time, I'm gonna appoint Mr. Nathan Harker to be our Commissioner for the Stanton River District on the Planning Commission.
Okay, Mr. Dudley's made a motion that we approve, adding Nathan Harker to the Planning Commission appointment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Dudley, seconded by Mr. Ingram. Is there further discussion on the motion?
Yes, could I make a few comments on?
Let me get the second.
Okay, you got it.
Push second over here.
You've already got the second.
Do now, okay. Uh, yes, is there further discussion on the motion?
Okay. Can I say something now? Okay. I'm not gonna embarrass him, but he's on the back row, back there in the very back. If everybody would turn around and look at him, Nathan would stand, you can see him. Nathan is a Virginia Tech, class of twenty-third, twenty, two thousand and three Bachelor of Science in Forestry. Nathan has a business of his own. He is a forester. He cuts, he's a logger. He's been in Pennsylvania County now for fifteen years. Nathan's thirty-nine years old, owner of Pennsylvania County Forest Products and a logging and timberland company, and he also employs five residents of the county, and he has been employed them since two thousand and eight. So instead of just saying, this is the guy, I wanted to give you a little background of what he does. He does, he's a wonderful person. I know him personally, and I think he can make good decisions on the Planning Commission. This is the reason I brought him to the, to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley.
Thank you, Nathan.
Is there further discussion? Please, all votes have been cast, please record the vote. Thank you again for your service.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if he told you exactly what you're getting into, but we appreciate your DSS Board Appointment, Mr. Dudley.
Okay, that's, that's mine again. At this time, I'm gonna be appointing Bob Carlberg to the DSS Board.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Dudley to appoint Carl, Bob Carl Berger.
Berg.
Berg.
Yes, sir.
To the DSS Board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Dudley, seconded by Mr. Davis. Is there further discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dudley.
Okay. I'm not gonna embarrass him either, but he's right there back in the back, too. You just, well, turn your head back to the very corner. If Bob would stand, Bob received a BS degree in communications from Liberty University nineteen ninety-two, and he's been full-time there as an IT professional since nineteen ninety-three at Liberty. He resides in Pennsylvania County, over towards the Breits area on the lake, and he's been there since two thousand and eleven. Enjoys woodworking, boating, fishing, and I'll say, I know Bob personally, very, very, very intelligent man, makes good decisions, and that's the reason that I've asked Bob to serve on the DSS Board, him and along with his family there.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please tally the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Again, thank you very much for your service. I happened to serve on that board last year as the board appointment. It's a great, great board. Take you some tissues to the meetings, because some of the, they do great work over there, but some of them is, is tough, and, you know, you have to make decisions to help those that are less fortunate, so I praise you for your service and thank you again very CPMT alternate appointment, and I don't see Ms. Boswell in the audience.
She's not, but I spoke with her. She was in the work session earlier today. She presented this information to you all. Monica Karavannik is a CPMT board member, but due to work and personal conflicts, she's not always able to attend the meetings, so she would like for the board to appoint an alternate to sit in in her place when needed.
And this is David Gussler?
David Gussler, yes, sir.
Okay, board's pleasure.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to appoint Dave Gussler, excuse me, to the CPMT Board as the alternative for Ms. Karavannik.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Scares, seconded by Mr. Dudley. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please tally the votes. Motion carries unanimously. Again, I don't think Mr. Gussler's here, but we thank him for being willing to do the alternate. We're down to board members' reports. Mr. Davis.
Don't we have?
We had additions.
We did.
We had.
Thirteen matters from work session.
How many we got?
Nine.
Nine.
Man, he's trying to get us out of here. All right, you got thirteen. Do I have a motion to accept a CPMT attendance report? Can we do them all at one time?
No, you need to take them one at a time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the CPMT attendance report and accept the letter from Monica Karavannik.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is any discussion on the motion? All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. But the next one, I can see it.
That's me. Can we go ahead and do it?
Go ahead.
Uh, the second one, I make a motion to authorize conducting a public hearing at the February Board Supervisors Business Meeting to consider implementations of proposed revisions to the Pennsylvania County Code as recommended by Treasurer Shorter relating to changing the annual tax due in the county and other changes related to outdated licensing fees.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Dudley, seconded by Mr. Davis. Is any discussion on the motion?
This is to advertise a public hearing for February?
Correct.
Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. All right.
Ready for the next motion, Mr. Chairman?
I am ready, Mr. Chairman. County Community Pet Program Policy.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt a new county community cat program policy as presented.
Motion made by Ms. Scares, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Miller. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries six to one. All right, we're down to the support of House Bill four eighty. Who's got that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash zero one dash zero four relating to support of House Bill four eighty regarding enhanced retirement benefits for nine-eleven dispatchers.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ingram, seconded by Mr. Farmer. Is any discussion on the motion? Please record your votes. Please cast the votes, I'm sorry. Please cast the votes, I'm sorry. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to solid waste fine escalation system. Who's got that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize the conducting of a public hearing at the February Board of Supervisors Business Meeting to consider revisions to Pennsylvania County Code Section seventeen dash twenty-one relating to the potential inclusion of a solid waste fine escalation system.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Scares, seconded by Mr. Davis. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, budget calendar. Do I have a motion concerning budget calendar?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one budget calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Scares, seconded by Mr. Ingram. Is there any discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, rescue grant.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve the contract to vest sales and service in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars, five-hundred-and-two, and twenty-five cents, I'm sorry, and to appropriate a total of two-hundred-and-sixty-one, nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, sixty cent to the grants fund and approve a transfer of seventy-thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-three dollars from the contingency fund to the grants fund to satisfy the local match requirement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Ingram, seconded by Mr. Davis. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. I just want to, we're going to pause for one second, let me explain to you all, because it looks like we're just going through these like this. We have a work session that starts at four-thirty, and actually, the legislative part started at three o'clock this afternoon, and they're open to the public at the county offices. So all of this stuff has been discussed in detail. I didn't want you to think we were coming over here and just going through it willy-nilly to, tonight. So it has been discussed in detail, and it wasn't part of the current agenda. That's why Mr. Farmer read, read them into play to start the meeting, because they were discussed at length this afternoon. So please make a note, the same day that we have a board meeting, we always have the work sessions. The tradition, the starting time for the work session is four-thirty. If you check the calendar on the county website, you will see if there's any other meetings happening prior to that, but we would welcome you being there at four-thirty, so if you're ever interested in hearing a detailed discussion on what may be on the agenda, whatever, you get a lot more of that information over there than just in here. And I see Diane McMahon shaking her head. She comes to them real often, so please feel free to come. Matter of fact, we would love to have you, so. But I wanted to let you all know that, that, that didn't attend them regularly, that that's, that's what transpires, so, thank you. We're down to letter transmitted regarding medical process for county inmates.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to direct county administrators to send the enclosed letter to the sheriff concerning the Medicaid process for county inmates.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Scares, seconded by Mr. Davis. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask you to cast your vote. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to fire and rescue commission stipend.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a monthly stipend of a hundred and fifty dollars per member per month for the fire commission with the stipulation that members attend at least one meeting per month to be eligible for the stipend.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Scares, seconded by Mr. Ingram. Is there further discussion on the motion? Just for the citizens, we have several of these commissions like this that receive a stipend for their time and effort. They spend a lot more time than a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars worth. It's just a token of appreciation for them being dedicated to serve, so that's how this is coming about. I'll ask you to cast your votes, please. All votes have been cast, please record the vote. Motion carries on a six to one. Okay, we're down to, actually, board members' report. The one I tried to get in fifteen minutes ago.
That's right, that's the one.
All right, Mr. Davis.
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Dudley.
I have none, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Mr. Farmer.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In the, excuse me, the Kallesgretner District, we've actually had three devastating home structure fires since our last meeting in, in December, and I just wanted to reach out and recognize our men and women volunteers. They actually had two in one night, and they never missed a beat, along with their neighboring agencies that came to help with those fires. So not only am I, you know, thankful for all those volunteers, but also just take this time to recognize the families that are, have been devastated, lost their homes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Ingram.
Yes, sir. I, I just wanted to, to say that, however, I was not part of the board when this board voted to note our county as being a Second Amendment county. I would have surely voted in favor of that, and for the true patriots in this room, I thank you for that, and I appreciate those that had the kindness to vote me into office, and I promise to serve you well. Thank you.
Dr. Miller.
Thank you, but no.
Mr. Scares.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of things. At, at the risk of giving you a heart attack, I, I want to let these guys that are here to support the Second Amendment know that I, I really do love you guys coming out and talking to us on this. It's really dear to my heart, and I certainly honestly would want to succeed from the Union if it were not for President Trump, so I, I think West Virginia, I'd love to, to move over there, but I, I didn't say that, Mr. Chairman. I don't want you to get upset, but, uh...
You ain't making a motion, are you?
Not yet. A couple of things, we have NRA banquet coming up on the twenty-seventh of February, Friends of NRA. I hope you guys will go out and support that. The funds that we raise for that banquet go directly to the shooting sports in the area. They support the Boy Scouts, support our school systems with their shooting programs and safety programs throughout the county, and, and I hope you'll support us. We, we do a pretty good job on that every year, and I'm expecting a big crowd this year, so please find somebody on that banquet committee and buy a ticket. One other thing, Fire Commission just got enacted for the county, and they've got a lot of hard work coming up in the next, probably, six months, so I think the stipend that we just enacted today, they're going to, they're going to make, make that money. They should, they deserve more, I think, but we'll get into that. Good thing that the, we're having a fire academy tomorrow, and that's one thing, we've had a hard time getting training, a hard time getting volunteers for the fire department. This is going to be a huge deal. It's going to take eyes through firefighter one and two, teach them hazardous materials, first aid, CPR, vehicle rescue, and they're hoping to get emergency vehicle operations. So to me, that's going to be a huge deal to get our fire, our volunteers trained up. That's been one of our big problems with the volunteer fire departments. And I think there was one other thing. We've got a commission meeting tomorrow, and we're going to, a lot of highlights tomorrow. We're going to adopt a vision and mission statement for two thousand and twenty, and again, I'm really excited about this fire commission. We've got, got a lot, great things we're going to accomplish, I believe. Thank you.
Mr. Dudley has indicated he does have something.
Yes, I do. I thought about it, and it was something that Ben Farmer was speaking of. It's been several fires in, I think Ben's and mine area in Pennsylvania County, as far as Hurt and Gretna area, and I think Kaylin, you reached out to us, and we're going to have a young man here, just to let you guys know, next month, this young man with the house on fire, and he was outside, and it was fully engulfed, went back inside and saved two other lives. He brought them back out, and they live today because he was a brave young man. The reason we're holding it off, I think, because we're going, he's in the middle of his basketball season, and we're trying to finish it off, off that, but it would be a great thing if you could show up just in support of that young man. We're going to have a special presentation for him. I just thought I'd let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Just have a few items. The first thing I want to do is, I want to welcome to the, their first official meeting tonight, Mr. Ingram and Mr. Dudley. Very excited about both individuals, and I'm looking forward to serving with them. I've seen just a lot of enthusiasm since the election with both of them being gung-hoing out there, you know, and I think they've energized all of us a little bit, so we appreciate that, and we really look forward to serving with them. We, we think we've got bright things for the future of Pennsylvania County. I think we'll be hearing some really good news going forward over the next six months to a year, so please bear with us. It, it takes a little more time than even we like sometimes to, to see things come, come together. I do also want to recognize one of our employees. We, we talked about it tonight, we, we have great people here in Pennsylvania County. So I'm always kind of reluctant to, to name specific folks, but because they all do such an outstanding job, I'm, I'm truly proud of our entire staff. Our leadership team and our executive team has done a wonderful job, but I did want to compliment Mark Moore. I've seen a, a lot of stuff on Facebook about Wayside Park, and it's been really exciting to see the change up there. I know the hard work that's gone into it, and, you know, I think, I think now, we might have to do a little something to upgrade these parks at the middle schools. That one's looking so good. Mr. Moore, you, you've elevated, so, you know, we're, we're feeling a little lack of love down here on the South Side. Mr. Dudley's got the, got the park going on up there.
Yes, sir.
The Bobo Project at Wayside.
Yeah, he, uh...
Go ahead.
You know, you know, Mr. Farmer, that Gretna site was really pretty down there at the middle school until...
Yeah.
You see what's going on at Wayside, so. But no, Mr. Moore, we really appreciate it. It's, it's wonderful to see that kind of thing going on within our county, and I'm sure it'll be a shot in the arm as we try to do more economic development in the northern end of the county. We, we appreciate your hard work and thank you again. I also want to thank the citizens tonight. I'm a lifetime member of the NRA myself, proud to be one, certainly supported the Second Amendment with no question, so I appreciate you all coming out tonight. You're the backbone. I will challenge you on one thing. I've seen so much passion and so much commitment since the past election, and I'm going to challenge us, because I think when we need to be this excited and all is pre-election time, we need to be sure that we get all the voters out there to vote. Things usually happen the way they should happen if we energize our base and get out there to vote. So if we, if we're passionate about our Second Amendment's rights, then let's get out there and vote. So encourage the folks that live in rural Virginia to really hammer the polls. Let's, let's don't, in them odd years, let's don't drop down to forty, forty-five percent participation. Let's, uh, let's get them out there. So, you know, keep that passion so we can do it better next time. And lastly, I do again want to thank my colleague and my friend, Mr. Davis, for his service last year as chairman. He did a wonderful job.
Wanted to do it.
And Mr. Scares said wanted to do it. It is very time-consuming, and it's, uh, it can be stressful at times, not only on...
Every month.
As Mr. Chairman, but on your families, because you're going a lot. But Mr. Davis did it, and his, his family supported him, and we appreciate it, Mr. Davis. Thank you very much. And now we're down to county administrators' reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things real quickly. We did today begin our review of the budget request, and started looking more deeply into our projected revenues and expenditures for FOI-20. Things are continuing to be tight, but we continue to stick to our plan that we put in place several years ago, that we would not plan to and try at all costs not to raise taxes or change the tax rate, for that matter, except every four years upon reassessment, and we aim to continue that this year. Unfortunately, growth is very slow in the county, in the tax base, and expenses are growing more quickly, so we will be challenged once again, and we will continue to keep you up to date and start having more regular visits and updates with you in late February. Also, wanted to just start planning in your ear that we also have a very significant fundraiser coming up in March with, for the pet center, and are doing that in conjunction with the NRA, are hoping to present some courses that are specifically aimed toward women shooters and aiming toward safety and awareness in that, in that bracket. But at the end of the day, we're trying to raise money to care for our community pets, and we hope to have a great turnout in March. I'll tell you more about that as the weeks and months progress. I wanted to congratulate Mr. Slimp on the ambulance grant. It is, Vaden and I are still in shock at what it costs to put an ambulance on the street. I mean, we're talking about almost three-hundred thousand dollars, and Mr. Slimp was able to get that grant. The county's putting in a little over seventy thousand dollars, which will pay for itself in less than twenty-four months by reducing the cost of our contract with our third-party provider, DRT, in the Hurt area. And then finally, I wanted to express my appreciation to all the leadership of the county, particularly the department heads and the leadership team. You heard this evening the results of our annual employee satisfaction survey. We took it extremely seriously the last twelve months, and we made, I thought, very impressive strides in some areas that our employees said we needed to improve, and we're, I'm very proud of what we've done. We have a great focus on having a productive workforce that is a great place to be from eight to five every day, and I think the majority of us really, really enjoy working for the county. Our next phase with our employees took, it was more than eighteen months in the making and is now kicked off, which is a performance evaluation system where we are having more meaningful, deliberate conversations with our employees about expectations and performance, and I hope this time next year, we report again, great success and improvement, not only in satisfaction, but in performance and efficiency in county government. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hunt, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
There being no other business to go before this board, I declare the meeting adjourned.